Good evening. It is now by my clock 6:30, so just to get things started. To introduce myself, my name is John Hammer. I'm attorney from Rudman-Winchell, one of the town's attorneys, and I'll be serving as your moderator. Now, before we get going, first off, if you can't hear me, please let me know. Just take your hand and I'll hold the mic closer, otherwise I'll presume that you can hear me. As a preliminary matter, we've got a non-resident here, the board of the town manager.
Good evening.
So, would anyone care to make a motion to allow a non-resident to speak during the public meeting, or during the town meeting? That's normally...
No one.
Is there a motion? Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, is there any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? All right, great, the motion passes. That was a great trial of motions. So, I appreciate it. You well-practiced, but still really smoothly, easily. Okay, so. Now, it's a question. All right, so I'm just gonna start through with the warrant articles, and we'll go through one at a time. I'll read them. Again, I'll ask for a motion and a second, and then a re-discussion if there's any, and then we may need to have a detailed motion from the floor, and otherwise it'll just go straight to court. So, I will start with Article 2, which is to elect by secret ballot one select board member, tax assessor, and overseer for a term of three years. This has been done by a secret ballot election, and the results are that Kurt Giles was a prevailing party with 64 votes, Lucille Beck came in second with 44, and there were two writings for a total of 110 votes. While we're talking about votes, I'll also mention that the Irishman budget was approved by a vote of 65 to 44 with one blank, again, 110 votes cast. So, that's all that needs done for Article 2. Article number 3, to see if the town will vote to authorize the select board to act as the road commissioners.
Make a motion we accept Article 3, it is written. Second.
Any discussion inside? A positive vote will mean that the board will serve as or... All in favor? Any opposed? Motion has passage. Article 4, to see if the town will vote to appropriate $966.52 received from the state for snowmobile registration to the Newburgh County side Riders' Snowmobile Club for maintenance of their system or network of snowmobile trails.
Make a motion we accept Article 4, it is written.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Yes.
Just a question, do we have an active snowmobile club now?
I will defer that question to the town manager.
Yes, we do.
We do?
Yes.
Who's president?
Chuck Comstead.
Article... Any additional questions? All in favor? Any opposed? The motion has passage. Article 5, to see if the town will vote to set the date that property taxes are due in two equal payments on November 9th, 2023, and March 7th, 2024, and to fix the rate of interest at 8% to be charged on the unpaid amounts began on December 9th, 2023, and April 7th, 2024.
Make a motion we accept Article 5, it is written.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there a second? Is there any discussion? Seeing no discussion, all in favor? Any opposed? The motion has passage. Article 6, to see if the town will vote to authorize the select board to spend over late funds for abatements and unanticipated expenses, examples of forest fire, major breakdown of fire equipment.
Make a motion we accept Article 6, it is written. Second.
Is there any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Article has passage. Article 7, to see if the town will vote to accept and expend any donations, grants, revenues, or reimbursements in state or federal people monies, and any or all other federal, state, private, or international grants or reimbursements as provided by the main state legislature, city main divisions, departments, or bureaus, and/or federal, local, or private sources.
Make a motion we accept Article 7, it is written. Second.
Motion seconded. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion has passage. Article 8, to see if the town will vote to authorize the select board on behalf of the town to sell and/or dispose of the assessed property, real estate acquired by the town through the non-payment of taxes thereon, subject to advertising or saying for three consecutive days in any of the following local paper, town website, weekly news, and prior to such terms that they deem advisable to execute quick when deemed for such property, except the select board may allow the immediate previous owner or heirs one generation up to 90 days to redeem such property by paying the ball unpaid taxes on the assessed property plus interest, lien costs, and recording fees, and the municipal officers shall use special sale proceeds required by Title 36 MRS, Section 943(c) for qualifying homestead property if they choose to sell it to anyone other than the former owners.
Make a motion we accept Article 8, it is written. Second.
Any discussion inside? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes. Article 9, to see if the town will vote to accept any revenues from unanticipated donations, grants, or pass-through funds that may be provided by individuals, business association, charitable groups, or other organizations, which have not been listed in any previous or following articles if the select board determines that the gifts, donations, grants, or pass-through funds are in the best interest of the town.
Make a motion we accept Article 9, it is written. Second.
Is there any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion has passage. Article 10, this will require a more extensive motion than we've heretofore had, to nominate and elect two members of the planning board for terms of three years. It will open the floor to nominations.
Nominate Eric Smart and Ed Lovell.
Nomination of Eric Smart.
And Ed Lovell.
And Ed Lovell. Is there a second to those nominations?
Second.
Is there any other nominations? Going once, twice, both nominations, it's moved and seconded. All votes taken one at a time, and what's the first person's name?
Eric Smart.
All in favor of Eric Smart, please raise your hand. Any opposed? Eric Smart's approved, and the second one was...
Ed Lovell.
Ed Lovell. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion has passage. What was that, a name that you didn't hear?
No, I'm ready to vote yourself.
Not quick, get it down. All right, Article 11, to nominate and elect four alternate members of the planning board for terms of one year each. One year each.
Nominate John Ford.
Is a nomination of John Ford, is there a second?
Second.
Any other nominations? Have up to four alternate members to select one.
Nominate Brett Summers.
Second. Okay. Any other nominations to be had? Nominate yourself.
Dennis.
Amy Hansen's been nominated as second. We probably should've asked this lady prior. Are those individuals...
Yeah, she's sitting right at the side.
Do all those individuals accept the nominations? I'll take silence as acceptance, all right? And any others? There's still one more on this slide. Given that there's only three nominations, I'll accept a motion to approve all three, if that's acceptable.
Make a motion we accept all three nominations.
Is there a second? Is there a second? Okay, all in favor of the slate, please, Son and Kate. Any opposed? Congratulations. Motion has passage. All right, Article 12, to see what sum of money the town will vote to raise and appropriate for general government. The recommended amount is $317,194.
Make a motion we accept Article 12 for $317,194. Second.
Is there any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion has passage. Article 13, to see what sum of money the town will vote to raise and appropriate for public safety. The recommended amount is $139,227.
Make a motion we accept Article 13 for the sum of $139,227. Second.
Any discussion inside? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion has passage. Article 14, to see what sum of money the town will vote to raise and appropriate for animal control. The recommended amount is $8,377.
Make a motion we accept Article 14 for the sum of $8,377. Is there a...
Motion's written. Is there a second? Any discussion? Yes.
How many, like, what's the report for last year? Or is how many animals?
We didn't get...
Well, I would say, we kind of, we got a new animal control officer just, what, four months ago?
It was kind of midstream, yeah.
So, we don't have any numbers?
No. No. She's, yeah, I will say, she's very proactive. She's had, she's about to have her third spade and neuter clinic.
She just had her third one and has two more spade and neuter clinics that she holds here at the office, and we haven't heard any complaints about her not going to people or responding to people. She did a fundraiser, got a chip reader, so when she does pick up dogs and cats, she can read them and find their home before taking them to a shelter.
She writes a good report. She does a good job.
Do we share that with Dixon?
Yes, yes, yes.
Are there any other questions or comments?
I called today to report two dogs on the North Road. She was here within minutes.
Wow, good.
Yeah, we like her, that they're doing a good job.
Is there any other discussion on this matter? This motion has been moved to $8,377. It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, Dixon and Kate? All opposed? Motion has passage. Article 15, to see what sum of money the town will vote to raise and appropriate for road maintenance. The recommended amount is $573,494.
Make a motion we accept Article 15 for road maintenance for $573,494. Second.
Yeah, I just removed and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, all in favor? All opposed? The motion has passage. Article 16, to see what sum of money the town will vote to raise and appropriate for waste management slash solid waste. The recommended amount is $133,500.
Will we accept the Article 16 for solid waste, $133,500?
Item's been moved and seconded. Any discussion?
Is Perks on the auction block? So, is this written in stone, the 54?
There is a auction on July 12th. They have been in negotiations with two or three different buyers for the last year, and they're hoping that one of those is gonna be sealed up before the auction, but they're not positive. But, that's all they could tell me today when I...
Well, we, we should mention that. Yeah. We, we don't know really what's gonna happen with Perk between MRC collapsing and this thing with Perk, but when we left MRC, we voted as a town to leave MRC, go stay with Perk. We got back, what, $80,000? No, $100,000. We got it back, all the $100,000 because we were an original member, right? Yep. And so, we set that aside. So, if we get in a bind, because who knows what's gonna happen with this trash thing, we have a little cushion there to take care of it, you know? And I would imagine that the next time our trash contract comes up, we just renewed it, but it was a good price, but the next time it comes up, probably it won't be as equitable as it is right now, you know what I mean? So, I'll just, just let you know that.
When does the current contract with this...
We just signed, we just signed a three-year contract with them again. Yeah. So, we have, so 2026.
Any further discussion or questions? The item has been moved and seconded. All in favor? All opposed? Item has passage. Article 17, to see what sum of money the town will vote to raise and appropriate for building repair and maintenance. The recommended amount is $2,000.
Make a motion we accept Article 17 for building repair maintenance for $13,000. Second.
Item's removed and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, all in favor? Any opposed? Item has passage. Article 18. This is the scary items.
Ten pieces.
Article 18, to see what sum of money the town will vote to raise and appropriate for insurance. Town recommendation is $28,719.
Make a motion we accept Article 18 for insurance, $28,719. Second.
Item's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Item has passage, notwithstanding the forevoting music. Article 19, to see what sum of money the town will vote to raise and appropriate for the library. Recommended amount is $1,000.
Make a motion we accept Article 19 for the library for $1,000. Second.
Item's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Yes, sir.
I just wanna make note and think, Gary, all the years, so...
Yes.
Rest in peace, Gary.
Yes, I agree.
My question is that Gary was card, did you always ask him $200, or that we always appropriated around $200? Just wondering what is the reason for the increase?
Well, we, last year, we budgeted $500, but Gary was very frugal and never used his money from the Stephen King grant, correct? Yes. And he paid in advance, so we had money left over from the Stephen King grant, so he had paid in advance the library program?
The program they use in the library, library world. He had paid three or four years ahead to use up that grant money, and it's $500 a year, so we had to include it in the budget. I'm surprised Tracy hasn't said anything about that.
No, I'm all for that, the library.
He was so frugal, that's what he used the money for.
Like, $200, $200.
Any further discussion or questions? Item's been moved and seconded. All in favor? Any opposed? Item has passage. Article 20, to see what sum of money the town will vote to raise and appropriate for E911. The recommended amount is $500.
Make a motion we accept Article 20 for E91. Is that E911 for $500? Second.
Item's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Item has passage. Article 21, to see what sum of money the town will vote to raise and appropriate for cemetery maintenance. The recommended amount is $20,959.
Make a motion we accept Article 21 for cemetery maintenance of $20,959.
Second.
Yeah, it's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion inside? Seeing none, all in favor? Any opposed? Item has passage. Article 22, to see what sum of money the town will vote to raise and appropriate for the general assistance. The recommended amount is $1,000.
Make a motion we accept Article 22 for general assistance for $1,000. Second.
Item's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Any opposed? Item has passage. Article 23, to see if the town will vote to apply revenue from the following trust funds to reduce the amount to be raised through taxation for roads and schools. The recommended amount is $20,000 in the breakdown of the trust fund provided.
Make a motion we accept Article 23 for recommended amount of $1,000. Second.
Item's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Any opposed? Item has passage. Article 24, to see if the town will vote to transfer the following from the undesignated fund balance slash surplus to reduce the amount to be raised through taxation. The recommended amount is $200,000.
Make a motion we accept Article 24, recommended amount of $200,000.
Second.
Matter has been moved and seconded. Any discussion inside?
Where's the $200,000 gone? Your road budget.
We apply it towards taxes, so the taxes aren't so high.
Can Tony on the board know how much we'll have in our under designated fund?
We currently have in fund balance $1,332,698.
That was at the end of last year.
Okay, 100, then, this one, 1,000, $1,328,804.
That's the end of balance.
That's what?
That's...
This is what we had today when we did the workshop the other day?
Yep.
Right there. $1,328,804, and I don't know the cents. So, we still have a healthy, we've still maintained a very healthy fund balance, and hoping to keep it that way. We have, we have a new fire station to take care of, but that'll be there.
Yes, sir.
Just a note from my calculations, that just about covers the increase in expenses that are applied in this budget.
Yes, we, we took in, Cindy just gave us a new report, we took in $185,500 in revenue that we didn't think we were gonna take in, so that kinda offsets.
Any further comments or questions? Seeing none, all in favor? Any opposed? The item has passage. Article 25, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate $1,000 for the building reserve fund.
Make a motion we accept Article 25 for $1,000 for the building reserve fund.
Second.
Item's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion?
What is it?
I'm sorry?
What is it? What is the building reserve fund?
I'll let the...
Yeah, so, a while back, the town was saving for a new town office, and when we came into this building, and there was money in that account, and the agreement, the lease agreement with the school said that we have to have that fund in case of any major problems that we would have to pay half of at the time, and we've just been putting money into that. We used a little bit of it last year to put heat pumps in the office.
What should we have in there now?
Thirty, I have $38,538.
Can that be used for this building and the fire station and any...
Yeah, because you never know, I mean, what's gonna crop up, so...
Any further questions or comments? Seeing none, all in favor? Any opposed? Item has passage. Article 26, to see if the town will vote to authorize the select board on behalf of the town of Newburgh to enter into three-year contracts for necessary services, i.e. trash and for roads.
Make a motion we accept Article 26, it is written.
Second.
Is there any discussion on this item? Yes, sir.
No, we did that by the year, not three. Years, three.
No, we do a three-year plan.
We do those for three years, always have, yeah.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, all in favor? Any opposed? The item has passage. Article 27, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate $5,000 for the public safety capital equipment account.
Make a motion we accept Article 27, $5,000 for the public safety capital equipment account.
Second.
Item's removed and seconded. Any comments? Yes, sir.
I got a question. Any difference between this and item number, Article 13, and Article 17, and we already okay for the public safety?
Yes, this is, this is to set aside money for future purchases of equipment.
So was that?
Correct. 17 was the...
13 and 17.
17's the budget. 17 was for building repair and maintenance, and 13 was for the operating budget. Brett, correct me if I'm wrong, we've got a fire truck that's 24 years old?
22 and 21.
22 and 21, so to replace that fire truck will be a huge sum of money. So, what we do every year, so what we came up with, can I just explain this for a minute?
Sure.
We used to have their, the budget, what they didn't use in their budget would go into their capital equipment account, and that was usually below $5,000. So, instead of doing that, we put what they don't use back in the fund balance, and we just put $5,000 every year in for their capital, toward a capital equipment purchase. It's just planning for the next big purchase.
So, there's a balance there now?
Yes, I do, I do not know the balance.
I don't have it with...
I don't know the balance of that right at the moment.
That has been added to...
But we've been adding to, because a truck would really cost a lot of money, and we're...
Yeah, it's just under $100,000 in there now.
Just so that you guys will understand, a new fire truck that was purchased by Herman Fire for this year was $880,000, and when they went out to check the truck and approve for the build, Cody Sullivan was told that that same truck, stacked effective of July, was gonna cost $1.2 million for that exact same truck, and our plan is to replace the truck by hopefully 2025, because that is the life expectancy of any fire truck, is a maximum of 25 years, and we're right there for both of them. So, that gives you an idea of what kind of money that we're talking, and it's times too, because I've got two trucks that are right back to back that are gonna have to be replaced.
So, we'll have to, hopefully we can miss some grants available, and we'll be digging in the scratch, I believe, so...
Okay, are there any additional questions or comments on this item? The item has been moved and seconded. All in favor? Any opposed? The item has passage. Article 28, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate $2,000 for the New burgh Food Pantry.
Make a motion we accept Article 28 for $2,000 for the Newburgh Food Pantry. Second.
Item's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Yes, sir.
Just wanna thank, I wanna say thank you to town of Newburgh for the past couple of years, supporting the Newburgh Food Pantry, and... And we do serve anywhere...
Uh, you're not saying nothing, you're good, everybody.
Pass the nugget.
Thank you.
Yep. I wasn't sure I was wanting to be, well, I wanted to stand up.
Oh, you want some money.
I don't think so. How long have I had to stand up for? So, I just wanna say thank you for supporting us. And we serve anywhere between 50 to 60 families in Newburgh at the Dick's Mart each week. And I have a couple Roth Foods and Valerie Foods who donate their time every week overseeing this food pantry. And they are going out doing deliveries in our community, up to 15 shut-ins that are in our community, bringing them food. And so, I wanna give a shout out to them because they have their kids there with them too every Friday, loading up cars, the people who can't even pick stuff up. So, I wanna give a shout out to them for what they do every week. They've been overseeing that. But every given month, we're serving about 70 families, cause the numbers go up and down between 50 and 70 each week. But we do it every Friday from 10 to 1, uh, 10 to 1:00. And we serve a hot meal also with the food pantry every Friday. And once a month on Thursday nights, like tonight, Thursday, Thursday is the most difficult of all. So, that money's been used, and we keep getting donations, and that's how we thrive. It used to thrive a long time ago off of people just racking up credit cards. And so, I think it's a community effort, so I really appreciate everyone for what they do. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any additional comments on this item? It's been moved and seconded, all in favor? Any opposed? Item has passage. Article 29. See if the town will vote to authorize an increase in property taxes levying established in Newburgh by state law. The events that the municipality budget approved under the following articles result in a tax commitment that is greater than that.
So, this is coming, this is coming up.
Make the motion we accept Article 29 as written.
This is...
No, this one, yeah.
The matter's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion on this item?
Can somebody explain what that means, like in terms of...
So, the state has a law that in order, that we can't go over a certain percentage without this article and your approval?
A percentage of what?
The, I think the levy limit is 2% of the previous year or something like that. And in order, our budget can't increase that, over that amount, which it always does. So, we have to have this article that approves that to happen. We, in 2015, 2016, when we did the 18-month bill and changed that fiscal year, this article was always in prior to that. But with that 18-month bill, there was no way for us to figure if we were over when we called this thing. So, we took the article out and subsequently we thought to put it back in until this year. So...
So, that's basically saying that if our budget increases more than 2% from year to year, that we are saying that's okay for that to happen?
Yes, yes.
Any additional comments or questions on this article? All right, all in favor? Any opposed? The item has passage. Article 30. See if the town will vote to allow the select board to sell and dispose of the old fire department property.
Make the motion we accept Article 30 as written.
Item has been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion on this item?
Um, correct me if I'm wrong, are we working with a broker to do something like this? I'd really love to see like a Newburgh auction. I don't know if that's allowed, but I would love for it to stay within a Newburgh resident rather than it going out to, you know, out of donors that might come in for an investment opportunity.
Well, we were gonna list it with a realtor to see what the value was with it and everything else.
I mean, we've already paid for it time and time and time again, right?
Yep.
As taxpayers, so I think first right of refusal is the next option.
It's all done, it's all in the...
Do we have the right to just auction it?
No.
I don't know about auctioning it.
No.
You could... You could put it out to bid, but...
So, it'd be nice if it could be some type of a community building, you know, that we could still use it as a community.
There's too much.
There's too much work that's...
Yeah, that's...
So, the building has no value, it's the land.
Yes, it's the spot, yes.
Listing it with a realtor, nothing says that a Newburgh resident can't buy it.
That's right.
But we need to have appraisal, PMAC appraisal, done on it. And then take it from there.
Yeah, like a thrift clothing store or something like that, I could see in this community, we'd be...
I know there are a couple of people in town that are interested in it. It's the last commercial property in the commercial zone in Newburgh.
Oh, right.
And people are just chomping to get businesses in this area.
So, if it's listed with a real estate firm, they're gonna do a market appraisal of the property?
I would imagine, yes.
And, because I mean, right now, properties like that are going for above what their value is.
Well, you would have to give business, you would have to give an evaluation at the cost of the town. The borrower is the one that's gonna get an appraisal on it.
A realtor, it's called a CMA.
Can I, I would like to recognize some folks who have had their hands raised. Sir?
Yeah, you want to, like the old buyout that, on the kind of that goes south station, that was reverted back to richie's land, to the ownership, assuming the old town hall that used to be there. I'm assuming the deed is written to the town. And before we sell it, you might wanna check to make sure it's not reverted back to the original plan or how it turns. So, I assume that's one of the things.
There is another request, Steve, over here.
I would like to see the town of Newburgh get as much as possible for the land. If the Newburgh person wants to pay for it, then so would it, that'd be great. But if they don't, then it'd just be nice that we got as much as possible. And I think through a realtor's the best way.
You wanna tell them what the extended plan, what the money is, that we're going back? The money coming back in from the sale of that? From the sale of that property, what we are hoping to do is widen the driveway in, widen the road in for fire vehicles and, you know, now we have a lot of people coming in and out of here. So, that's what the money, when we sell that property, we're earmarking it for that project, basically.
Should be fairly substantial now with the rest go towards the new fire truck that we're gonna need for years.
Yeah, we hope it's... We're gonna have to come back to the people once it's sold and we know as the we're...
Yeah, that was my, that was my next thought, was when you do have the money back, how, you know, it would be, it would come for the town.
Yes, yes.
Sir, in front row, you have to turn it up.
So, why don't we keep the land? We're not making any more land. And we don't know what the future holds. You know what I'm saying? I understand that you're looking to make an investment in the town, but to sell it to widen that road, I thought that was already paid.
Well, it's not just for that purpose, but what, the well up there is collapsed. It's 35 feet deep, but what would we do with it?
Who knows? Who knows what the future of this... Right, that's right, exactly. There may be a municipality here at some point in time, you gotta need a place to put that. And we already had the discussion about putting the, putting the fire department over on the other side, but that couldn't be done, so obviously you're not gonna build a municipal building over there. You know, I'm just saying, 10 years from now, you know what I mean, you don't know what Newburgh's gonna do. The population could grow. I mean, that'd be a cotton goods spot, you know what I mean, to do it. Or, I don't know, I'm just saying, right, they're not making any more land, so I just think that it would be...
But we're gonna have some serious money and just keep, in the upkeep of an empty building, first of all.
Demo it, demo it, it's junk anyways, right?
Yeah. I'm certain it has value to somebody. I would certainly, certainly explore the option of selling it. And remember, if that's a commercial building, that puts more property on our tax, uh, tax paying rolls.
Yeah, but that's from me being in there and observing it inside of that building, and I'm sure that Brett would attest to it, that there's so many issues with that building. I mean, I couldn't imagine somebody even coming in and rehabbing it, and that's why we just built a fire station. You know, if it was a feasible thing for somebody to use it, we'd be using it. I don't, you know, I don't wanna argue, I'm just saying that I think that to hold on to the land, cause, I mean, unless you're gonna take the next place next to it for taxes, you know what I mean, you're really not gonna acquire any more land. I mean, land's kind of a...
But that land isn't big enough to do anything with that the town would want to do.
You got 22 acres, you said, on the radio.
Right.
How much land is that all the...
I don't even believe it to make it.
There's a gentleman behind you that wants to...
I agree with Ed. It's the dead center of town. And I think we should sit on it. It's, I don't think the value's gonna be enough to really put it in anything. I know it's commercial, but it's...
Please wait till you...
It's, I think, I think we're better off to sit on it and use it, find out, you know, what we can do with it, use it in the future.
Yes, sir.
I might make one little point on Buddy's idea of making sure the town has clear title to it also. That goes way back. You don't know what it said, like revert to the fire hall.
Isn't there two separate tanks, two leach fields on that too?
It was, I know that the fire station had a septic tank in the middle of the parking lot, right?
Yeah.
And then the, did the old town, the double wide town office, did that have a leach field in its own?
Right, they shared, I believe, they were sharing.
They shared a leach field, but there were two separate tanks.
This gentleman on the left.
Well, really, the town really shouldn't be in the business of trying to manage property. And the fact that there's a building there that has liability to the town, it's best that we get rid of it and try to maximize what we can get at now rather than have these expenses each year holding on to it. You gotta insure it regardless if it's good or not. You might as well try to get something out of the building rather than tear it down. It just makes a lot more sense to me to liquidate it, do it forward.
There are a lot of grant monies out there right now to help with daycareers. So, I've seen lots of people start to build daycares for people. It's been a nice addition to these communities.
I think maybe we should, you know, sit on this for a little while and maybe bring it up in another discussion at another town meeting to go in depth more about it.
That's, that's why it's on the warrant for you guys to discuss, I mean, really.
Well, and there'll be more town meetings as well because of things that have been gone through in the planning board. So, there's gonna be more town meetings to come anyways, things will be passed, so. Someone light up.
It would be nice to get an appraisal on it and make sure that there is clear title. By working with a realtor, they'll research the title, they'll come up with what it could bring. And if it could be listed then, or we have another meeting with that information and decide on it.
Yeah, that's what I was, yeah. If we do that and, you know, you don't sign any contracts or anything yet and have another meeting and find out the results of all that.
But once we know that there's clear title and there's a value there, take it from there.
That seems important.
You don't have to necessarily engage with a broker to be able to order your own appraisal and title work. So, you don't have to go through them to do it, you can go right through a title agency or order your own appraisal.
Yes, sir.
An appraisal's gonna cost you about $2,000, $2,500 for a commercial, and it's $575 for a full title search.
Yep.
I'm in business.
Oh, there you go, yeah. I'm a wonder.
So, that's what it's gonna cost you for an appraisal, so $20,000, $3,000 for a commercial appraisal is what they're gonna charge. And like I said, $575 for a title search. Realtors, we'll give you a certified market analysis, a CMA, for free. And it's pretty close to an appraisal.
Yep.
You have any comments on this here?
No, I was just gonna make the motion to move on out of the 30. They will vote?
They will vote. Well, there's a motion that's been made and seconded, so you need to go one way or another. If you go yes, then you're voting to approve authorizing the sale of the property. If you go no, then you're not giving that authority. So, before we vote, are there any final comments? So, all in favor of authorizing the disposal of the fire department property? And all those folks? And the motion does not pass, the item is defeated. Okay, moving on to Article 30. See if the town will, no, that was Article 30. Move on to Article 1. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate $6,000 for building security systems.
Make the motion we accept Article 31, $6,000 for building security system.
Second.
The motion's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion on this item? Yes, sir.
No, I just seconded, sorry.
Okay, is there any discussion on this item? Okay, all in favor?
No.
Yes, sir.
I'm just wondering if we could get more information in regards to the type of security system that was decided on?
What, we've got a couple of different estimates. The one that we're working towards is the one for, it'll be close to $6,000. It amounts to about eight cameras that will be recording full-time to a hard drive.
Are they interior or exterior?
Exterior, yeah, yeah. We've got a few problems around and think that with the investment we have here now, it'd be wise to keep a more careful eye on it. And it does have the capability, capability to expand if you wanted to bring cameras inside.
Are you using a particular service provider or...
Yeah, well, the one we're looking at is Nightscape Technologies.
Will the cameras also be at the fire station and what's the, is there a monthly fee to...
No, it's all, all contained in here.
Just as...
The recording, the recording equipment will be in the office. There's gonna be, I think it's eight cameras, two on each corner. And one is gonna be pointed towards the fire station. So, they're all gonna be on this building here, not the fire station.
And what's the monthly expenditure?
There isn't, no.
Sir, do you have comments?
Yeah, with the...
Are there any other comments or questions? Yes, sir.
Yeah, I kinda got one. So, the $6,000 that we need for a, for a security system... If we wouldn't need the, we would need to raise the $6,000 for it if some of the local work that's just been done had been bid out because... if some of the local work that's just been done had been bid out, because, uh, there was, uh, a little project done not too far from here that, uh, somebody might have measured and priced it, and it was like eight thousand dollars cheaper for another contractor to perform the same work that had been done for that, I guess is kinda what I'm going there. So, I don't know. I, if you want to answer questions, but this, here just gave me the opportunity to ask that.
Okay, I, what was the question?
No, my, my question was, is if there would have been an option for other contractors to bid on something that just happened, like, right in this vicinity?
Right, right.
Uh, there, it would have been eight thousand dollars savings, and the, the, to be able to raise the money for security cameras would have made...
Okay.
I guess it's my, I don't mean to bring it up like this, but this is, right? Yeah.
Yes, sir.
Is there a security system on fire station? Do we have any cameras down there, uh, uh, separate from this?
We don't, in, in, in this, uh, bid here, we do, we don't. There is, uh, one camera that's gonna be called what they call a four K camera, it's a high-resolution camera, which is gonna, going to be, uh, pointed towards the fire station, which hopefully can be blown up if there's some sort of incident that...
As much as, I mean, there's stuff in here, but that's, you owe the money down there.
Yeah.
That's something we should look into, you want a separate article?
Well, a lot of times, the fire and rescue people have to go to the backside of the building at night and come into their offices that way. So, we wanted to make sure there was safety out there. Um, we've had people, you know, stuff behind this building, so we wanted to make sure there's stuff out there. I mean, I don't know, we can look at expanding that, I, I suppose. I don't know, is that an expandable system, do you think?
I don't know if you have the distance to go from here to the, it's worth.
Yeah.
All right.
Kinda see if that would, if something we could add on.
You'll be second.
I was just wondering, um, like, the fire department and the rescue, like, what were their thoughts in the, you know, you know, meeting security? I heard reference to the investment here, protected, but we also have to ask...
You've got new investments down there now.
Right.
I already asked about the camera being put down there, and that's the same answer I got, was that we're gonna point them to the fire station, and I don't like that idea. I'd have to have something down there absolutely.
Okay, ladies and gentlemen.
On this, he mentioned something here, something going out in the building, and I don't understand. When we went through this, uh, business with Dunn, we had, we had a void that needed right here in this building, and we all hoped that anything over five thousand dollars would go out to public bidding. What happened to that?
Then the entire project did go out to bid? No.
No, didn't?
No, we just went... We, we, we got, we got, we got, so, we got two bids.
Well, we did bid.
We, we actually called four people. I called four contractors.
Did you publicize it in a paper? No.
No, because a lot of times...
You were on the telephone, you called your friends.
No, no, I called reputable local companies, Steve.
I'm quite sure there's other reputable companies out there, if you put a bid up, they're gonna buy the bid.
Well, in this day and age, I called four reputable companies. Uh, Bowman Brothers, E.W. Littlefield, Hardy Construction, and J.M. Brown. Two people responded, Hardy Construction and J.M. Brown, two out of four.
He talking about the security system?
Yes.
Okay.
Oh, 'cause I thought you were talking about the building system.
Oh, I did too.
Yeah, that's the impression I was.
So...
I didn't, I didn't call anybody, I didn't do the research on it.
And I'd like to know where they got the raise from.
So, we got a vote from this Nightscape, and then Seacoast...
I don't doubt you have votes, Ed. You got on the phone and called them. I wanna know why you didn't go out to public bidding. Build a newspaper.
Newspaper is expensive.
Well, so is this system. You might have been three hundred dollars advertised.
Well, let me give you a little...
You say ten thousand.
Knowledge. We did a septic system through the state for a family here in town. Part of the requirement is it had to go in the paper for bid. That, that advertisement in the paper cost us a thousand dollars.
And how many responded? Did we get any responses?
We got two.
Two.
Yep.
Okay, we have other comments over here.
On a different note, if you have the camera facing the fire station, you still don't have coverage for the backside of the fire station, and I believe there's like two doors that would not be covered at all, so...
There's an exit on that end, yes.
Yeah.
Our, our primary focus was this building here, because this is where the trouble has been.
I understand, but if we're gonna, and we're gonna put the money into a system, I think we should have everything covered, um, including all the equipment that's, that's kept in the fire station. There's not much distance between here and there, um, as far as, as trouble goes. So, I would just wonder how much it would cost to add, I assume you'd have to put a Wi-Fi repeater in, if you don't have Wi-Fi down there, um, and another camera down the backside.
We could, uh, at this point, we could vote to increase the amount that we could spend and see about getting bids to add that building.
It would have to be probably a whole separate system.
A whole separate system.
I wouldn't venture...
That would be, I'd like us thinking to have a separate system.
Yep.
Because it's too far away, like you say, Wi-Fi, or something happens, and you're a little blurred, but then you're not gonna lose it.
They're gonna have their own Wi-Fi down there and internet.
You can, you can put a repeater in?
Okay, you can have, um, people recognize, there's a fellow in the back who's been waiting. Sir?
So, you can put a repeater in? We did it at our house to get Wi-Fi work shot across...
They'll have their own Wi-Fi.
Okay.
They will have their own Wi-Fi, yeah.
So, why couldn't they have their own cameras?
That's what we're doing, we said, we'd have to have a whole separate system down there.
But this system would serve this building, because we had trouble here. You, you know, we can, we can look into a system for down there, that's not a problem.
Gentlemen in the back.
Yeah, I was just kinda agreeing with all that, saying you suggest that we just reject article thirty-one and put head street cameras down there, with also the chief's approval of how many cameras we need, if there's any cameras here outside of this building, because he said security issues, just because the teenager's gonna walk on the roof. Um, so, God knows what we're gonna do with, you know, two million dollars' worth of equipment, new fire trucks down there, and a nice new building. Um, and then so, we need internet down there, separate from this building, instead of just trying to buy more equipment to reject our wireless down there, so they can have full-speed internet for themselves, they're not lagging in anything, so they are, are rested and fired, so...
Yes, ma'am.
I don't think that we should put off having security for this building here now. The fire department building is gonna be another separate thing, they're gonna need a whole separate system that should be handled separately. This building sits fire off of the road, there's lots of hidden areas for people and kids and whatever to mess around. We need to deal with this now, not later. And we can all agree that the firehouse will need it, but we could do that later on.
Right, thank you, thank you.
Yeah, I wanna make a motion to amend article thirty-one to raise six thousand to ten thousand for building the security.
Yes.
I have objection, you cannot raise if it's a state level.
Oh, yeah, that's right.
Okay. We're back to the work, is there any more comments or questions or discussion on this item? Going once, going twice, all right, so, yes?
So, if we reject this motion, can we make a new motion to add a different amount? Now, not unless it's already published, okay.
We need to just approve this and then know that we're gonna do another one for the firehouse. We have to have, but this building needs protection now.
Okay, any further discussion? All right, so the motion was to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate six thousand for building the security system. A vote in favor is a vote in favor. Uh, all in favor, please raise your hand. Keep up, please. All, uh, I need opposed. Okay, the motion has passage. The final article for tonight is, shall the, shall an ordinance entitled, "Aim, Management Ordinance, Ordinance" be enacted?
Make the motion, we accept article thirty-two as written. Second, sir.
Just put on a motion and a second, so any discussion on this item? Yes, ma'am.
Can you just explain what I mean?
The floodplain management ordinance is over forty years old. It is a federal mandated program, and if, if it's not passed, we will, the town won't be part of it anymore. So, anybody that owns a home in a, in a floodplain will be unchillable.
Who are you?
Oh, I'm a Marine.
Chair, chair! Chair, chair, chair.
He is standing up. You're lucky you're over there. Don't mess with the Marines.
All right, are there any additional comments or questions? Seeing none, all in favor? All opposed? The item has passage. That comes to the end of our warrant, uh, motion to adjourn.
Before, before we close, I have one thing to say.
Okay.
So, I misquoted our fund balance previously. So, our fund balance was one million, three hundred, thirty-two thousand, six hundred and ninety-eight dollars. Last year, we voted to, um, appropriate six hundred thousand for the fire station. We appro, we voted to apply a hundred and ten thousand toward taxes. That left our balance at six hundred and twenty-two thousand, six hundred and ninety-eight dollars. We are putting two hundred thousand dollars back in, that's our estimate. So, our fund balance estimate is eight hundred, twenty-two thousand, six hundred and ninety-eight dollars. I just wanted to clarify that, so, next year, when we look at fund balance again, it's correct, so, that's all I want to say.
Make the motion, we adjourn. Second?
All in favor?